This conference will now be recorded.
I don't know if you want to record this awkward part where we're waiting for form.
This conference will now be recorded.
Of the common council of the city of Port Orford Thursday, March 21st, 2024 at 5:32. Oh, that's not bad. Okay, so quick roll call, Councilor Rath.
Here.
Councilor Belisis.
Here.
Councilor Burns?
Here.
And Councilor Pogwitt.
Tim here.
Okay, and Councilor Webb is going to be a little bit late, but he did call me and say he's on his way. Uh, okay, so please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation in the God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, additions to the agenda, we just found out that we're going to be dropping off 3B. The historic preservation is not going to make it this month, but we are going to be adding an item under 8D, and that will be Resolution 2024-04. And all that is, is to authorize Melissa to be a signer on the bank account. So just housekeeping stuff, and that's why it's a last minute thing. And those are all the changes we have. We can do it on the fly if we absolutely had to. So our first presentation is going to be related to speeding in Port Orford. Jen Head is here to present that. She's investigated the matter and announced she's here to report.
Hi there, Jen Head, 1437 Jackson Street. I'm going to put my glasses on so I can see words. Thank you, Joseph, for putting this together. Are you going to be my advancer? Okay, go ahead. So just a little preface, this is something that we've been talking about for over a year, and worked on it a little bit in planning, it was directed by planning and former CA Huddle to look into the matter further. So I've been working with a company called Traffic Logix, and they specialize in traffic calming solutions. So speeding is a problem in Port Orford, we've already established that. Cars can be seen visibly speeding, sometimes excessively, let's see if I can read it out, no. Speed is captured on my cameras. My cameras do not capture speeds over 45 miles an hour, and because I'm a nerd, I drove by my camera at 25 miles an hour so I can see what the speed limit looks like, and I have hundreds and hundreds of examples stored in the cloud of cars flying by my house. So I heard a comment at the last meeting that I spoke about this, that it was potentially a muffler issue or a volume issue. So I just wanted to be clear that it is not a sound issue, it's actually a speeding issue. So at times, speeders have exceeded 60 miles an hour on Jackson, and when I do see that, I call 911 and the police respond immediately. Countless people have voiced their concerns on Facebook and elsewhere, and cameras would hold people more accountable, potentially contribute to revenue, obviously a safety issue, and free up local police for more serious issues, as RJ noted when we talked about this. So I just wanted to say this disclaimer, that we value our local police, and this is in no way, shape, or form an attempt to replace any of our officers, especially our dedicated traffic officer. You know, they're here and we value them, but speeding is still an issue. And so I feel like these solutions would only complement what we already have in place. So as you know, there was a House bill passed last year that allows cities in Oregon to use ticketing cameras. The ORSs around that are constantly evolving, so obviously if we got to the point where we were going to do that, we would need to look closely at the current ORS to see what the restrictions are. So on to some of the solutions from Traffic Logix. Go ahead, Joseph, thank you, go ahead. So there's ticketing and non-ticketing devices. We don't have to watch this, this was a video that was provided by Traffic Logix to sort of weigh the options between Bluetooth and cloud-based data collection. So Bluetooth would mean that police officers would have to grab each device and capture to their phones, you know, which is kind of cumbersome, and it just gives them another thing to do. The other option is that the data is stored in the cloud. So when Joseph will send this out, you can click on that link and watch the video. So step one, I think, is to collect data. We know that speeding is an issue, we've seen it, and you know, I'm sure that everybody can attest to it, especially the police, but in order to pursue funding or anything like that, we would really need some solid data to demonstrate the need. So this is an option that Traffic Logic offers. It's bidirectional, cloud-based. We can mount it high up, a key required to open it, they claim that it's difficult to steal, but is it Port Orford difficult to steal? I don't know, that's a different.
I'm glad you said it.
Yeah, that's a different issue. And, oh, I suggested that we add an Apple tracker to the inside, so if it is stolen, it could be tracked. And Traffic Logix said that was a really good idea, and they were going to recommend that people do that moving forward. But also Officer Brennan had another data collection device, but we weren't able to connect to figure out what that was. So either way, just we need data, we need to figure out like where the worst spots are, you know, because some of the more expensive devices are not movable, you know, so we would really want to make sure that we were being judicious about where we put them. Okay, go ahead. So this is the first one, this is a driver feedback sign. It is not a ticketing camera. The cloud data package is $450 annually. It's store any picture data, so the data is relatively, you know, small in comparison. It would be about $3,000, the bracket set is about $200. There's a lot of data for it. Also, oh, go ahead, I think there's more data on the next slide, yeah. So this thing operates in stealth mode, which means that you can turn off the driver feedback sign, but still collect the data. So I don't need to go through all of this, but you guys will have this for your information. Go ahead. So what they call it apples-to-apples data, so when you turn off the speed tracker sign or flashing sign, people tend to go faster because they think, or maybe they're not paying attention, or because the data, you know, maybe isn't being captured, but it does actually capture data while the speed is not being flashed to drivers. So that's kind of the nifty feature. Now the ticketing cameras, go ahead. So this one is pole-mounted, and so obviously harder to move than the trailer option, but it's also less expensive, but it's, you know, you can see $23,000, which is something that we would need a grant to purchase, obviously. I do say later in the presentation that Traffic Logix offered to, they claim that these expensive devices pay for themselves in the first week. They offered to not invoice us 90 days, but I don't want the city to get into a position where, you know, we have these things and we're on the hook, and maybe we won't be able to pay for them in, you know, that period of time. So it does have limitations. It's hit or miss with motorcycles. And also, if there's tailgating, sometimes it might capture two cars, but there is a way to mitigate that on the back end when you're ticketing, so go ahead. So this is the other option, it's something that can be pulled around with any vehicle, it's fairly light. It has a solar panel option, it's a little more expensive, $30,000. So it can be put, you know, it can be dragged around to residential streets, it can be put on the highway. For the highway, they recommend two, one north, one southbound, just because the highway is so much wider. I think these maybe only capture in one direction, but I can't remember at the moment. That might be another reason for two. Go ahead. So this is just more information about the trailer option. So the data package for this is very expensive, and then there's overages if you go over, because they're capturing images, they're high-resolution images, and they take up a lot of space. But I will talk about another option that negates that. You can go past this slide, this is just more detail about the trailer option. So this is what it looks like on the back end administrative display. The local police could manage this, or the city could manage this themselves, but Speed Tracker does, or Traffic Logix does not recommend that, because every city, they said, that has tried to do that, has been overwhelmed by the amount of, you know, captures that they're getting. So there's another option, go ahead. This is an example of what a ticket notice would look like, this is just a warning. So I think the cloud option was a little over $7,000 a year with expensive overages, which, given the volume of traffic on Highway 101, could be substantial. So they made me aware of this third-party service called Dakrotech, which was started by a retired police officer, and it's a third-party police record management system service that was, like I said, created by a retired police officer, and they have an end-to-end services that manages the entire lifecycle of ticketing, from image review, if there were two license plates captured, to all the way to ticketing and collections of fees. I think their fee is 10% per ticket. There are ways to sort of include that in the ticket, in the price of the ticket, either as an administrative fee, if that's allowable, or by, you know, increasing ticket prices 10%, or if that's allowable. So those are options that we can explore. Most third-party services take 50% of the revenue from the tickets, we would keep 100% of the revenue. And this is the service that basically all of the customers of Traffic Logix who have these ticketing cameras are using. And it would negate any cloud service fees, because they would keep all of the data in their servers. So case study at Winter Garden, Florida, relatively small town, obviously, not Port Orford small, but small for, you know, people who don't know about smaller towns. But they don't have any major highways going through their small town, so they were thinking that the traffic might be compromised, or even less than what we experienced in Port Orford. I found a traffic volume study that, from 1996, that showed an average of 4,500 to 7,000 vehicles per day on Highway 101, which is pretty substantial. In Florida, and this may have changed the time that I think this was implemented, they could only turn the camera on for one hour in the morning and one hour in the afternoon, and they were getting 230 to 270 tickets per day, Monday through Friday. Let's see, at the time that I did the research, which was a few months ago, to my knowledge, there were no out limits as to how many hours a ticketing camera could operate in Oregon, that may have changed. I think the ORS is constantly evolving, and Officer Perry mentioned that it may be a four-hour cap, yeah. So that is something, you know, that we would have to consider. Can you go back just real quick, let's see. Okay, they took for 75 tickets the first hour on the first day. And let's see, they tried to manage the ticketing on their own, but they were instantly overwhelmed, so they switched to Dakrotech, go ahead. And then they also, Disney has also implemented ticketing cameras, and within the first two weeks, they had $18,000 in revenue from the cameras, go ahead. So apparently, I don't really know much about sourcing equipment for municipalities, but they recommend a site called Source. And it has a lot of benefits, there's no bidding, we can register for free, there's no freight, which would otherwise be $1,000, US-based tech support, you know, and so on and so forth. The cameras are good for a wide range of temperatures, and weather conditions, they're not gun-resistant, so. But it's basically in their best interest for us to keep our equipment running. They would consider a discount for Port Orford, depending on multiple factors, so that's something we could explore. Like I said, if we didn't go with Dakrotech, we would have an annual subscription, or that's pretty hefty. See, multi-year discounts possible, but the Dakrotech solution negates that. They recommend two ticketing cameras, one north and one south, and they offered to come present at a city council meeting if we had further questions, or if we were getting like further along in our process and we wanted to talk to them, go ahead. Like I said, they offered not to bill us for 90 days, you know, but we would be on the hook for $60,000 if we weren't to make the revenue in that time, it would possibly be not great. So the plan I'm advocating for is to use the Speed Tracker Plus, which was $3,000, or some other data collection device, to collect data on where traffic calming is necessary in town. This would help support, you know, this would really be important for any grant, so we could really have some solid data to demonstrate a need, and then pursue grants. I know that ODOT has some grants, and I can work with some folks who know people at ODOT to explore that further. It's a huge safety issue, so, you know, I think it's just a matter of finding the right funding opportunities. Another issue that a lot, some people don't like, other people do, is I believe it's legal for us to lower the speed limit on our residential streets. So for a street like Jackson, where we know there are huge speeding issues, you know, it's a straightaway, there's only like one-stop sign, and traffic on Jackson has increased substantially since the road diet. I love the highway, love the road diet, but literally, when it happened, we noticed a substantial increase in traffic on Jackson, and it just hasn't let up. It's the main artery through town for locals. So I did some calculations, and the time to travel one mile, which is approximately the distance from like the 25th Street stop sign to the highway, is 2 minutes and 24 seconds. So at 20 miles per hour, if we reduce the speed five miles per hour, the difference is only 36 seconds to get to travel the same distance. So really, 30 seconds, can we really not spare 30 seconds for the safety and livability of residents on Jackson? That's a question we have to ask ourselves. That's it.
That's a good question.
Thank you.
Yeah, so.
You nailed it on the time, too.
Oh, thank you, what was my time?
I didn't mention it, so I didn't want to say.
Appreciate it. Yes.
Well, Bellis wanted to.
So you live in Jackson, how many children live on Jackson roughly, do you have like a guesstimate?
A fair number of children, so families have come and go. I almost witnessed my friend's toddler get really creamed by a truck that was barreling down Jackson. He was going down 16th Street, we were at the top, and he was on a balance bike, and could not stop, and this truck was just, and you know, just one of those moments where we were like screaming at the top of our lungs, and his brother was chasing him, and, you know, it's like that's the kind of stuff that we have, kids, dogs, animals popping out, kids popping out. My son is grown now, I have a neighbor with a son, my neighbor across the street has two small children. Amy has moved to the other side of town, I know there's some children, there's a child in Caroline's apartment.
So there's quite a few.
There are, yeah.
I can think of eight of 10, right, and they all have friends, so there's 30.
Quite a few up there, but I just wasn't sure.
Yeah, and another thing to consider on Jackson, I am not advocating for sidewalks at all, but there, you know, sometimes you're walking right on the road, and even when somebody's going the speed limit, like I was, Julian and I were talking to RJ in the street in Jackson the other day, and we should have pulled over more, but we thought it was going to be a quick chat. And a truck came barreling past us at 26 miles an hour, RJ said, because he clocked it. But, so they were technically not speeding, but didn't slow down and give us a berth. So it was right behind us, didn't feel great, you know? And that's like really common, people are just phum, phum, you know, they're just completely oblivious to pedestrians and potential, you know, things popping out in front of them.
So the Speed Tracker Plus, can we get, can each counselor get the one that you're recommending? Can we get a copy of that? I think we might have got it last time, but I think I pulled all my information out.
Sure.
From the last presentation.
I have the PDF from Traffic Logix.
Okay.
Yeah, that's just the box, right, the data collection device?
Well, I just, to look at the device, all that info.
That one captures in both directions as well, so.
Okay, and that's the one you are recommending?
That's the one I'm recommending, just because I've been working with Traffic Logix, and they, you know, they specialize in traffic calming solutions, and so they sort of have a full suite.
You've been talking to real people and stuff?
Yeah.
Oh, that's a big story.
We had a meeting not too long ago with a few of their folks, I think someone from the East Coast, and then somebody that was in Canada, yeah, but they're really easy to work with, and we have a new like regional sales rep or something, but he connected me with the folks that could give me more information, because I was thinking, you know, this $8,000 a year, whatever, plus in cloud data storage was going to be a deal breaker. But they were, you know, then they told me about this third-party solution that most of their, if not all of their customers are using with great success, so. I mean, just think about the possibilities, because, you know, James isn't working all the time, and our officers aren't out, they can't be everywhere, you know, and so even just four hours a day, after-hours, or, you know, Sunday's big speeding day on the highway, I cross the highway pretty much every day, so on foot, yeah. And then I would like to connect with Officer Brennan to see what he, what kind of device he was recommending. One more thing, too, that I forgot to mention is that I would advocate for rumble strips on Vista coming down the hill, and I believe they do sell rumble strips that are kind of, that are just easy to install, like bolt into the street, that are removable, because Vista is a really bad spot, you know? People sometimes manage to, like, can't even stop at the stop sign when they get down to the bottom, so.
So is that.
I can't believe that we had soapbox cars on.
When you say Vista, you mean where it comes down to?
Comes down to the intersection at Jackson. Yeah, on 18th.
18th, mhm, yep. So you work with Officer Brennan on this, right?
Well, I didn't actually connect with him, there was an email that Ann forwarded to me from the chief, and I responded to it, but I don't think I heard back. And I just haven't been able to connect with him to see what device he was recommending. Officer Perry made it sound like the device that he was recommending was more inconspicuous than the one that Traffic Logix has, and I don't think it really matters if we use theirs or a different one, we just would need the data to be able to write a grant, so.
Awesome, so we'll talk about it at the end of the meeting, see if we want to put it on the agenda for next month. But we sure appreciate all the footwork you're doing.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
So, and yeah, and we'll talk about the next step, like what the best way would be.
Just keep me posted, yeah, I could, if you let me know, I could reach out to Traffic Logix and set it up so that they could be at the meeting to answer more in-depth questions.
Is everybody just good with that by consensus?
Yeah, and you're willing to reach out and try to find a grant perhaps from ODOT?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So everybody's good with that, Perry? Yep, Ann is there, okay, good, yeah. Go ahead, that saves us a meeting.
Thanks, Jen.
If they can make it, great.
You're welcome.
And just to throw this out there, because the way it was advertised, like, this is a safety issue. This, like, when it says we're going to make this much in the first day, right, like, we've got to remember that that is not our motivation. So, just because we don't want to get dinged on the other side in a random way, because that's not how we work around here. Okay, so we struck B, and we're going to have the presentation on the Curry County Sheriff levy. They're increasing the levy for the sheriff's department, and they are sending, well, it happens to be commissioner trust, to let us know about it. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, thank you for taking the time to listen to us, and hopefully we can, some garner your support. I do have a couple of handouts, you guys will be the first to receive these, if I can get these out. So the first one there is a, is kind of an overview of the levy itself, and the second one is some frequently asked questions that we've garnered from the public on social media and through just interactions. So, if I may, so just start with, you know, why are we asking the voters to consider this levy? So a quick brief, you guys are, I'm sure, very aware, but maybe the people online are not. So as of now, Curry County has the lowest taxing rate in the states. It used to be Josephine, but they passed their district, which alleviated their law enforcement obligations off their general fund. So Curry County now is the lowest tax rate in the state. Now, as you guys know, this was all supplemented in the past, this was established with the idea of being able to harvest our timber through the ONC Act. And when the ONC Act was pulled back, we really started to hit that financial cliff. And that financial cliff has just been kind of an ongoing topic for many, many years, as you guys are well aware. And so that, how we got to where we are right now is, the county has been supplementing law enforcement in particular, which then obviously eased the burden on some of the other mandated services, clerk, assessor, treasurer, you know, the veterans, juvenile. With one-time money, ARP funds, LATCF funds, miscellaneous one-time money that was coming through, that's how we've been surviving, in conjunction with using road reserves. The one-time money is, it will be finished effectively June 30th, right? So in order, what we're facing essentially then is a 31% overall budget shortfall. That's including the use of road funds. So now, you know, that's across all facets of county business. So that's the reason why, obviously, we're moving forward to try to get a law enforcement levy. Now, how will this law enforcement levy impact the citizens of North County? Well, the, yeah, the, so the levy itself is designed strictly for law enforcement, and it is to provide 24-hour service, enhance jail programs, and faster response times. Now, we know that it's also going to allow us to operate in full capacity, which obviously we would not be able to if the levy does not pass, but we're really focused on what we're going to be able to provide. Now, how much will it cost, right, that's the next big question. So what the ask is right now for this levy is $2.23 per 1,000 assessed. And how is that cost decided? Well, what we did was, we went out and we retained an organization called the Nelson Research Group. They're a statewide survey research firm, and we asked them to survey Curry County as a whole as to what they would accept. And we gave them several different options on this survey. I'm certain several of your residents have probably participated in that survey. And what we found was that the citizens wanted 24-hour service. They didn't want to just do a levy to maintain service, they wanted improved services. And so that's what we put forward. Now, I will say, North County in that survey was one of the largest supporters. Your citizens said at a 57% rate that they would favor this, which gave us a lot of confidence in moving forward with this option. Now, we have, we've set up a few different avenues for information. We've established a website, the website is www.currycountylevy.com. It's on your page as well, but for. If you, it's on your page, um, as well, but for citizens who are watching, you can access it there. We do have the frequently asked questions listed on there, and we do have an option where you can click to ask additional questions. And what we do is we try to get those answered within a day and then add them to the frequently asked page if, if we feel like it's something that the general public would like to know more about as well. We also set up, um, the ability for people to get their assessment information and how this is going to directly impact them financially. A lot of times, you know, we, there's a lot of information that goes about and, and a lot of the people, you know, there's, it's hard to understand how assessments work. We did put a, a video on there to explain how assessment works, how it's different than your real market value, your assessed, um, value is, you know, considerably less and how that is, um, has, how that's calculated. But we also, but we, we have, we'll have a link on there, so you can go on GIS and figure it out yourself. But if, a lot of times, that can be pretty complicated, so we put a phone number on there to call in anytime, Monday through Friday, nine to four, and that person will actually assist in finding out that exact amount that you're going to end up paying by doing the legwork for you. Because we want to get away from the, it, some of the things that happened in the past. We've learned, we learned from the past, and a lot of times, it's a lot of, um, information that isn't correct, if you will. Currently, countywide, um, on average, the county portion of everybody's taxes is about seven point six, seven point eight percent. And so when we are increasing, when we're asking for a levy that will impact county tax, it's not your, we're not doubling your overall tax bill. It's, it's, it's that portion of it that we're asking to be, um, increased. And so, um, a lot of times, that kind of information can get, uh, a little misconstrued. And so we just want to make sure that everybody has the accurate information, that they have access to that accurate information, um, so that we can, um, put something in front of the voters that, uh, that they'll be well informed about when they make a decision on, in, in May. Um, I did, uh, the sheriff is also in attendance and, um, I believe he has a, a few things to say, and then I'll follow up. We do have some future meeting dates, um, that I'd like to inform everybody about so that they can attend. This is an opportunity for us to take some questions from you as well, but we will be having a town hall, um, in, in North County, in, in your building, thank you. You guys are very gracious allowing us to use this building again, um, so that we can then also field questions from, from your constituents, so, uh, Sheriff?
Jay warmed up the seat for me, so, that's good. Thank you, Jay. Thanks for having us up here. Most of you know me, if you don't, I'm John Ward, I've been the sheriff for the last nine years, going on ten years. Been with the sheriff's office for thirty-three years, leave it or not, I, I still look pretty young, I think, so. My wife says I do, anyway.
That's all that matters.
That's all that matters. But anyway, um, you know, we've been fighting this funding battle for, for years and, uh, I've always been nervous about it and, but we built our office up to, to, you know, a pretty good, uh, organization with the men and women that we have, so the, and the services that we provide. We work real well with the other agencies, and I got to tell you, you do have a good police force here in Port Orford. Uh, we work well with them and, uh, we have a mutual understanding, if they need help, we respond. If we need help out there, they, they go out and it's quite often, if we don't have anybody in the North County at the time, and it's not too far out, we ask for them to go help. But, excuse me. But what we're trying to do, uh, it's like Jay said, is our biggest goal is to provide a pu- uh, better public safety. We, uh, uh, well, me, as the chief law enforcement of the, of the county, I am responsible for all public safety of all citizens in the county. So, I support any type of funding that we can get, and this levy is, is our opportunity to go to twenty-four-seven. The only twenty-four-seven agency is Brookings right now, and I'm not sure how many officers they have, but I would imagine in the middle of the night in a graveyard shift, they, they maybe have one, maybe two, uh, you know, depending on vacations and sick time and things like that. But I wholeheartedly support what we're doing on this levy, trying to get some permanent funding. I, I know it's not permanent at this point, it's a five-year levy, but we'll be trying to make sure that we have or look for other sources of funding as well, but, um, I can't tell you how much it would help the North County, because, you know, right now, up until this week, I had two deputies living up here. You guys know Levi, you know, we hired him back and, uh, he just moved back down to Gold Beach to be a little closer to all the action. But you have Jeff Hughes up here and going with twenty-four-seven, I would need at least six more deputies. And right now, I only have, I have twelve positions, but I have four openings and I have, um, seven deputies that are actually on the road right now, so we can only handle like one to two shifts with what we have. We would, while passing this levy, we would have twenty-four-seven. We already have it in dispatch, we have twenty-four-seven in corrections, but we would need twenty-four-seven in patrol. It would make a tremendous difference up here in the North County. I would try to get people, resident deputies up in here, uh, to be called out if, if necessary. But, um, I would hope that, you know, what, about nine, about eight or nine years ago, we went for a, uh, another levy, and you guys supported it with a resolution, uh, to do so. But unfortunately, it just didn't quite pass, it was one of the closest ones we ever came to, but, um, uh, right now, what you're going to get is better coverage, better jail services, and about all I can tell you. Uh, we, we would surely appreciate your guys' support, man. I know it's, it's a big chunk, but, um, we'd rather have no law enforcement whatsoever, because, and I'm going to be transparent with you and honest with you, I just got an email from the finance director and they told me, along with my agency, because we're the biggest, um, budget issue of, of the county, my agency, um, with the other, the, uh, the DA, the treasurer, the county clerk, the assessors, and we all had to turn in a budget, we got a budget worksheet for, for a cut of thirty-one percent. Well, that's over three million dollars in our agency alone. Would decimate my entire patrol division and in the, into this, into the, to the jail as well, so, um, what we're going to get is, we're going to get better coverage, more, uh, twenty-four-seven coverage in, in the, in the county with the help of our citizens. So, that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. So. One last piece I wanted to touch on is, um, you know, why five-year? Why not go for a tax district like Josephine or some of those other things that have happened? And, um, you know, one piece of information that's really critical about all this is this, this, this five-year levy would guarantee patrol service, uh, jail service, uh, prosecution for the next five years. It could be the bridge that we need. I'm on the ONC Committee and, um, you may or may not know, but we, we initially won our case against the federal government on the ONC Act of nineteen thirty-six to restart sustainable yield, uh, logging of the ONC timberlands. That was appealed to a DC appellate court, we lost in that appeal, two to one. We've appealed to the Supreme Court and we're scheduled to be heard by the Supreme Court next month on this ONC decision. Um, now, not saying that they'll make a decision and, and they, those things often get pushed back. But if the ONC, um, timber operation is, starts back up, it's going to take time for BLM to ramp back up with personnel and things of that nature to get things going to sustainable yield, which would be one point two billion board feet in the ONC territories. But this is the bridge that could get us through to where, if the ONC Act is reenacted and we are able to get back into those, to those lands and harvest the timber that we grow so well, then we, in, in the, when this, when this five-year levy were to expire, we may not need to go for another one, because we'll have the timber funds to be able to continue operations. So, that was kind of the, the foresight that we had when we had decided that we was going to go for this five-year and not go for a law enforcement district. So, any questions I'd love to answer?
So if this worked out, it would protect the road fund, obviously?
Correct, this would, um, the road funds would not be used at all. This will, um, fund the, the sheriff's department, um, without any road funds. Correct. We would be in a lot better terms to our roads.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yes. Oh, correct, uh, thank you, Sheriff. Another key piece of this that we had, um, gained from the, from the citizens is, um, a seven-member review board, uh, will, a committee, seven-member committee, um, advisory committee, sorry, uh, will be, um, appointed to oversee all the levy funds to ensure that those are spent exactly as intended and provide the transparency back to the public who voted for it to, uh, who voted for it in, so. You know, we think that that's key in this, in this levy.
With North County representation on the board?
Yes.
Committee?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be obviously equal by parts, but yes, you will have North County representation on that seven-member, uh, advisory committee.
So one question I have about, can I ask questions? Okay, just making sure, I'm new to this. If you have four openings right now, do you feel you're going to be able to fill those positions or hire those positions? What is your, what is your plan there if you already have vacancies that you're having? Are you having trouble filling them, or?
Well, with the financial crisis that we're in, we're having trouble finding and retaining, uh, recruiting, retaining, because who wants to come and work here when they don't have a jo- job security? So, and there's a lot of other agencies that are putting sign-on bonuses, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars, come work with us, and they're having trouble hiring people. But what I want to do is I want to hire locally. I've been trying to, you know, try to fill those positions with, um, laterals, you know, somebody that's already certified, so they can come in, um, and go to work and, and maybe have two weeks of field training and then boom, to work. If I hire somebody off the street or out of the jail that's, that's not certified patrol, they got to go to a sixteen-week academy, another twelve weeks of, uh, field training before they're even out on their own. So it could, uh, almost a year before we can get people on the road. But, um, what I want to do is, like I say, there are a lot of good men and, and women here in, in our county that I believe that would be good police officers and deputy sheriffs, and I want to recruit. Because some of those already live here, they don't have any housing problems, um, and that's another issue about housing. So, I know a lot of people, I've made a lot of, uh, relationships over the years and, uh, you know, as to where I can make a phone call to somebody and I can get an answer or I can get help right away. So that's one good thing about, you know, the time I spend as, as your sheriff, uh, but, um, there again, I, I just recruit locally and, and, because I haven't ever really done that. When I say four positions, one of those is a forest patrol position, uh, we, we get money from the uh, timber companies and the US Forest Service for a forest deputy. Right now, the one I had in there is, is I moved to a sergeant in charge of the search and rescue, the, um, marine and, uh, forest patrol. Search and rescue alone needed a sergeant to oversee that, uh, because, you know, I have like fifty volunteers and there again, there's some men and women in, in search and rescue that I think I can get over into patrol. So, um, I, I just hate trying to do it right now, because I can't guarantee him job after July one. But with this levy, we can get there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one, um, you mentioned enhanced jail programs. What, can you be more specific with those?
Yeah, so we would, um, we would look at, so right now, the sheriff can speak on this pretty eloquently, but you know, we, we, we see as a lot of early release, um, things of that nature. And so, you know, we talked about the, the possibility of an electronic monitoring program for those who get on early release, so that we can still ensure that they, um, uh, have, uh, security measures, a community service program, you know? Right now, we don't have one, so if, you know, if this, if an individual ends up with a DUI, instead of being able to do certain amount of, of community service hours, they end up having to do their time in jail. And at that point, you know, who knows where the, who they're kicking out. So, having, um, a couple of those programs to be able to stand up, um, would be tremendous for our ability to, retain the, the people that would need to be obviously retained in the jail. Does that answer your question? We, due to the, due to the construction of our jail, we can't do much, because it's, right now, it's, it's grandfathered, we can't really expand or the actual facility itself, but we can expand the programs that will allow the, the facility to be more effectively utilized.
And again, one more thing to add to that is, you know, in the middle of the night, when I have two correction deputies on duty and they bring violent people in and they have to deal with those people, there's nobody to go help them. So, uh, it's a big liability waiting to happen, because there's, uh, domestic violence, uh, people, uh, people with mental issues, uh, people that were, were on drugs and, and it's, they can become a handful. We've had several fights in that jail where the deputies needed help and they didn't have no help to come out to help them. Had twenty-four-seven on, they would be there all the time. Patrol does go inside the jail and help with, uh, uh, people and like that, so.
Perfect. I, and, and Valisis, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for coming up here. I have a question, or I'm just wondering, could you please, um, help us to understand a little bit more about how, uh, having enhanced service from the sheriff's department or twenty-four-seven will, how that will interact with our local Port Orford police and services in our city?
Certainly, so.
Go ahead.
Well, like I stated before, you, you do have a great police chief and, uh, police officers here, but they're not twenty-four-seven either. And being that we would be twenty-four-seven, we'd have people in the area a lot more than there is now. And I can tell you right now, there's a visual deterrent that helps out. I guess I'm looking at this thing, I looked that way and she, Dr.
I knew you were looking, thanks.
So anyway, uh, we would be able to help and back up the city officers if they're not on. If it's their jurisdiction and there's something going on, we would go to the scene, stabilize it until they got there, get called out or whatever. If they couldn't make it, they would call us and let us know and we would go ahead and finish up the case. But most of the time, there's no doubt in my mind, these guys are pretty active, that they would come out and help or take over the case, but you would get a lot of service with that. People would get a lot more response times, a lot faster response time, whether it's from us or what's, for them.
So you could coordinate with our local people, maybe in a scheduling situation? So if we were not on, we could count on you to backfill that some?
Absolutely, if we're on duty, we're going to respond. I'm, you know, it's like I say, I'm the chief law enforcement of the county and I, I, I'm responsible for the safety and well-being for every citizen in our county. So, if Port Orford needs help on something, we're there, they, we need help, they're there. It's the same thing in Gold Beach and, and Brookings, but, uh, my, my hope is to get people, be resident deputies, like I said, I had two here and that was a big help, because if something happened in the middle of the night, I could call them like that and they were, they were responding. So that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay.
We sure appreciate you coming down, though, this is, I can't tell you how much I appreciate every time the county and the city gets to talk a little preemptively like this.
Absolutely, and if you wouldn't mind, if, could I, um, just put out some upcoming dates that the, you know, town hall and things of that nature, so that, uh, citizens will have an opportunity to come in and ask those questions? So, um, our next meeting, um, we have, uh, our, our town hall will be April fifteenth here at six PM. We'll have another one, um, April sixteenth in Gold Beach, um, at the, uh, Vent Center. And then we'll have one the seventeenth in Brookings, or in Harbor, um, but we haven't determined the, the location just yet. So, anybody who has, uh, an opportunity, they have questions they'd like to ask, number one, you can always feel free and reach directly out. Number two, you can, you know, obviously attend the, the, the town halls and, and, and get your questions answered and hopefully we can do the best we can and really utilize that, that website for any information that you may need or, um, assessment information that you may need to acquire, so that you can identify exactly how this is going to affect you and your family. Okay? Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to move into our consent calendar, which amounts to the minutes of November 16th and March 4th. Do I, does anybody need me to pull one of those out before we have a motion? Okay.
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Counselor Burns?
Yes.
Counselor Belice's?
Yes.
Okay, I needed that, that, yes. Counselor Rask?
Yes.
And Counselor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
Okay. Done with the consent calendar. Department panel reports, I'll be kind of pushy on these just because we have another presentation and, oh, no, no, I am sorry, we're at Citizen Concerns. I gotta start wearing my glasses to the meeting. And that is going to be Patrick Hollinger, please, please come up.
How was everybody this evening?
Thank you.
You?
Good, thank you. Please pass this out to you real quick.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That's a nice thick one.
Yeah, thanks.
It speaks directly to me, too.
Well, I know I only have a few minutes since this is a non-agenda related item, so I just drafted a little, little speech here I'll run over with you guys. So my name's Patrick Hollinger, I'm a candidate running for Currie Commissioner. And it's position number two, running against the incumbent John Herzog. But anyways, I'm 38 years old, I'm a husband, a father, have a wonderful wife, two lovely kids. I live down in Gold Beach and I was fortunate enough to be able to retire a few years ago from Otis Elevator. I worked with them for about 15 years. I've created and sustained a successful fishing lodge and fishing business in Gold Beach. And I've also co-founded with a good friend of mine, an incredible nonprofit organization to take our veterans and first responders fishing at no extra charge. And it's called Rogue Fishing Operations. I also currently serve as a port commissioner for Gold Beach and I also serve as a board member on the Central Currie School District. While with Otis Elevator, I held various positions, finished my career managing all operations throughout Southern Oregon. This professional management experience honed my business planning and operational skills and allowed me to develop excellent project management, people skills, plus it required I succeed in meeting the annual multimillion dollar budget plans that I was given every year. I also appreciated the value I was able to bring to my clients in developing their financial investments and in planning to ensure the longevity of their investments. Many have asked me, Patrick, why are you running for Currie County Commissioner? That's the hot one there. So, and I answer it this way. I'm a proven leader, I'm highly motivated to better our county through hard work and determination. My strong work ethic coupled with excellent people skills has been honed through my education and work experiences, enabling me to effectively manage those responsibilities. My life and business experiences have equipped me to contribute meaningfully to my community while successfully managing my professional and personal life. I approach each day with optimism and enthusiasm, looking forward to embracing new challenges and leveraging my education along with my life and work experiences. I will continue to invest in our county's future and in the process, make not only my home, but your homes throughout Currie County, better for all of our children. Frankly, I am highly motivated and passionate about serving on the Currie Board of Commissioners because without our investment, the likely future for our children and our community will be unnecessarily difficult and challenged because we didn't cure the obvious results of leadership failures in our near past. That's it in a nutshell. I look for your guys' support. I'm easy to get ahold of, whether it's through my website, on email. I have my phone number posted on my email for my candidacy as well. And I please ask for, you know, you guys to reach out, your friends and family and get to know me and know what I'm about. And I very much look forward to working with you and, again, bringing the county focus up here to Gold Beach and Port Orford. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Now, we're going to move into.
Now, you can do that, yeah. That's me. All right. I put in the packet just a few things. I'm trying to communicate clearly with counselors so that we can, you know what we're up to here at City Hall and what we're doing. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone. It's been a great first couple of weeks. It's a, it's a great job and I really appreciate the, the people that I'm working with. We have an awesome crew, so I'm excited about that. We do have increasing that communication. One of the things we talked about was doing those door hangers for the boil water notices and to lift the boil water notices. And so we're ready to hit print on that. So Andrew did a nice job working with me too to kind of come up with those and we're looking forward to that. And it's been signed off on by Superintendent Isador, so that's good. But if you want to see those, I can kind of give, show you the draft if you're interested in that. But otherwise, I'm just getting to know what, what we're doing and excited to be here. So if you have any questions about my report here or any other things, ask away.
I want to say thank you for the written reports. Those are wonderful. And they've been out, what, three weeks now? It's great.
I probably won't do one for tomorrow.
Report is something else though, too, right? I mean, I cannot get that out of my head. It's an old news thing or something, right?
You're thinking of like the Colbert Report?
No, I just remember Radcliffe. I don't know, it could have been 1980.
Mr. Radcliffe probably make you write a report and that's what you're thinking of was the Radcliffe Report.
That might actually be what I'm thinking of, actually.
Probably.
I like the format of the new, of the agenda.
That would be Joseph.
Joseph, excellent.
Talked about that, so you did a nice job.
Yeah, the hardest part as mayor has been, no, Melissa, you can't take all the responsibility for that. No, Melissa, don't stay until midnight. It's going to be tomorrow. Which is a really good problem to have. So, thank you. Finance, you know, the report on that mostly is going to be that one of the powers of the mayor is I can appoint committees and I'm going to start a finance committee tonight. I have a few calls out to people, but the one person that's confirmed is Tim. So I just, I don't want to slow down on that. We're in budget season. So as of right now, Tim is kind of heading up the finance committee. We can have one other counselor if anybody wants to jump in. But then I'm also talking to some people too, so I can report back next month who, how that progresses. Thank you, Tim.
I will.
I was waiting, I was trying to be patient. Okay, good. So that's our counselors and I have a call in to some people, but now that you're the official guy, I can put my head together with you and we'll come up with some support. But even just starting off with the two of you and getting eyes on things is awesome. So thank you both.
So can I ask a question? So are we still, what are we doing as far as a finance officer?
We just got that covered today, actually.
Today.
And that's confirmed, or I can probably say it.
I would assume so.
So Dave Johnson's agreed to come back for one more, one more budget. And it's really going to help, you know, Melissa make this transition to where, you know, we have someone to talk to the next person. So we just found that out this morning. Yeah, so we're fortunate to have a, like, we can cut that month out of our life of trying to find someone. So we're very, very happy.
Are we still looking for somebody else, though, to take over?
Hundred percent.
I think this is a stopgap measure to help, to help us build this budget because we're close to that. And so, so hopefully I can work with, I will be working with him to see how he has built the budgets and so that I have some of that historical knowledge. And Dina Lang has been amazing too with all of that to get me kind of up to speed. But having his expertise and that historical knowledge, at least for this budget cycle, to get this one out is going to be really important. So we also had the 2022 audit come through this week as well. And so that was buttoned up and taken care of. So those, those are a couple of things on the financial side.
And we're diligently working on getting some reporting for the packets, so.
Thank you.
Okay, public works, I don't see John.
He's online.
Oh, yes?
Yep.
Got any high points, John?
What's that?
Got a lamp or anything you?
That's dark in here tonight.
You got any high points you need to touch on for us, or?
No, I don't think so. I think it's all in the report there. We've got lots of stuff going on and we're just working through the motions. So we're working on Coast Guard Hill Lift Station again. The vendors are going to rebid it because it's been so long and there's been some changes with power. That's the big one right now. DD Pump Station, as you know, we got back online, but we did blow a pump up yesterday. So we're working on replacing that. That may need to retrofit. That's, that's more to follow once I figure out what the, the pumps are no longer supported. So they were put in 2,000, I believe, and so they lived their life. I'll, I'll update you on that next month, once I get cost and retrofit numbers for it. But as far as everything else, it's just, we're moving on, making water. Rain's coming.
It'll be fine.
Oh, yeah.
Can I ask you a question, John?
Sure.
In your report, and please don't be offended, this could just be a typo, under streets maintenance, it says visit drive is falling apart.
Vista.
Is it supposed to be Vista? Okay.
Sorry, and I was going to lead into that with Jen Ed's comment about the speed bump idea of putting in the slowdown strips. Well, we already did that at the top of Vista, so the potholes. We should be good.
It's working well.
It's working well. We need to get some plates on it. So the gravel showed up today and we got some cold patch left over. We're going to try to make our best efforts as soon as this next weather pattern moves forward, which is supposed to start tomorrow, should get about an inch, inch and a half, and then another inch, inch and a half on Sunday or Saturday. So once that comes through, maybe early Monday, Tuesday, we'll get up there and do some patch and try to make it better for, for the folks that live up there.
Oh, before I forget, we got to get our heads together on that pump station for Coast Guard Hill. We budgeted money for it last year, but the order didn't go quite right. So I just, I've got to jot it down so we don't forget it. And because we, we've put the money aside for it and it is in this budget, but it's not going to happen before the budget is over, it sounds like. So I don't want to.
Oh, it might. It, it, it might.
Might be before the June?
Might, right? Like, I got to July.
No, that's good, that's good.
We might get it by July. We're hoping.
Either way, I'm just talking on our side of the street of we can't, you know, we got to carry it over or do whatever we have to do.
Right.
I have a bad habit of not remembering things that I'm supposed to if I don't let it fall out of my mouth immediately, so.
And is that the, is that also true with the electronic weed water, weed water meters? That was in the budget and he says in his report need to discuss at some point.
And we still do. And realistically, that process wouldn't happen before July either. So another thing we need to make sure and be aware of, and that is, but the meeting, like, meeting with the meter people and getting those numbers a little more finite would behoove us before the budget season. We're talking about, we're talking about something we haven't even talked about yet.
I was going to say, this is, I don't, yeah.
We touched on it, it's the electronic meters for the system.
Are we still?
No, no, sure don't need to talk about it.
Are we still thinking about the lease ones or is this?
We're still, we haven't checked, we haven't said no yet. And that would be the start of the conversation, is get the hard numbers from them and then maybe talk to, well, we know that that's monetarily the cheapest, but we're going to have to get three bids anyway. So we'll have to talk to some other vendors.
So that's changed, Pat. That, that program through the ultrasonics that we were looking at, that company no longer is involved with that type of meter. So the new meter is going to be master meter, so I don't even know if it can fall into that program. We kind of, I think we missed the opportunity on the lease meter type deal. So I, I'm kind of going back through that whole process again, right now with the same vendor, but with a different branded meter that's ultrasonic. But I think that program, and we could talk offline about it later, it has switched vendors and it's not a preferred vendor. So we can talk about that at another point. But I don't think the lease program is on the table any longer, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay, good. Well, so, yeah, it definitely sounds like that's something that's going to carry over.
No, yeah.
Okay. Well, I guess, yeah, I know we're pretty shorthanded, but maybe we can shake the trees to see if we can't get ballpark numbers on what we're going to need to.
I'll get your numbers here by next meeting.
Perfect. I love it when you volunteer and I don't have to ask you to do anything. All right. Anything else, John? Any questions for John? Okay, please, any questions for Hank? Okay, planning. This is the kind of departmental reports I like.
The biggest thing going on in planning right now is we are still working on the DLCD grant. And in that regard, there will be a public workshop for housing next month on April 9th. This is not one that council is required to come to, but you're more than welcome to come to it if you want.
Thank you, Joseph. Mayor's report, I pretty much already said it, couldn't be happier with Melissa so far. She likes process and policy, so I couldn't be happier. And thank you for all that you've done. And thank everyone for stepping up in this transition. It's been a little bit stressful some days, so. Anne, thank you a million. Perry, everyone, Tim, Gary, Greg, Brett.
And our citizens were really happy.
Yeah, that whole process.
Yeah, our citizens were so proud of us, I think.
Good. Thanks, Anne. If you were here, I'd give you a high five.
Do it virtually.
Liaison Port, Counselor Webb is not here yet. I have some proximity though, so I can say that the crane replacement engineering is really close. We got the spots about 99% selected. We just have to finite that. So the crane project is on course and we just found out that some regional infrastructure money that we had kind of slated with, as a match money for a big part of the seafood hub brand that we're trying to do, that's become available now for a supplemental seawater system, which is really going to help the port. It'll, you know, it'll help the buyers, it'll help the fishermen and it's going to attract a lot of educational agencies down there because we're going to have like the only seawater that's straight from the sea, not out of an estuary. So it's, it's a big thing for all of us, not just the port. So that's kind of the, the high notes of the port, other than we need to paint some lines. And now we go to school.
No report.
Fire, Niall, report. Greg's not here. Watershed?
Yeah, I have some things to say. So I, we finally bought the land, I have to say it. I know I put it in writing. And we really have to, you know, thank the watershed council and in particular Linda Tar for all of her really important legwork. You know, I wrote about it and I won't take up too much time now, but just really want to highlight how important it is that citizens help our community, volunteers that step up to the plate and help. And Linda certainly just did an amazing job. And it's going to be such a fabulous thing for our drinking water source, our drinking water source area moving forward. So that's the big news. I also want to mention that of the grants that we applied for to do work up in the watershed, we found out that we're not going to get one, but we are probably going to be very eligible to get another one. And so I'd hope to have a little bit more information about that tonight, but I was unable to get enough information. So the next time I'll be reporting on, on that one. So that's exciting. That's to work on getting rid of our, our failing culvert up above the reservoir. So anyway, that's about it. There's a whole bunch of other things in my report. I've been doing a lot of work. Oh, one other thing too, we got the brick grant turned in in late February. It already feels like a while back, so that's super important. I did want to mention that we did put the meters into that grant. And so if we move forward on them before we get that grant, I guess we just, if we get that grant, we will just have to figure out how to move money, but that we'll have to see. We won't find out about whether we make the cut, I don't think, until later this year. And then it still will be a while till we know. So anyway, that's about it. Thanks.
I kinda wanted to slide 250,000 over for meters to protect it for you.
Thanks, Ann.
Thank you, Ann. Uh, Councilor Tidy is not available. Tim, do we have anything on TLT?
I believe Joseph has advertised for, for a meeting, um, or tried to reach out to the folks for a meeting, so we'll be needing to discuss that. And I'm still working with Dina to come up with the number for Main Street for their advertising budget, but...
That's a, just a, just an ongoing conversation.
Yeah, and I actually spoke to her this morning. I meant to tell you to tell Susan if you would, but uh, she said she's working on it. So I'm assuming her and David are trying to...
Yeah, and she's, she's as overwhelmed as anyone.
I gathered that in her voice again today. Anyway, I appreciate her and um, and um, Susan is not pushing me. Main Street is not pushing me. They would just like to know when we know, so they can plan for their advertising budget.
So this is, they've applied for a grant for their advertising? Is that it, or?
No, uh, Main Street is our advertising committee. They advertise. So they get the one percent, and they use that money to advertise. It's just since COVID, we didn't advertise, and there are some additional money. So they're working to come up with that figure, so I can give it to them.
Thanks.
Uh, and to expand a little bit on something Counselor Pugwut said, uh, the first meeting will be the first week of April.
April 1st.
Uh, not first, the first week.
Are you joking?
Serious, it's, they're April 3rd. Let me, let me say that, so there's no confusion.
Do we have a time?
Um, we will coordinate with that and see what works best. Um, and we have about seven or eight applications, I believe.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Awesome. That's good.
Joseph, do you by any chance have a time on that meeting on the 9th for the public housing?
5:30.
Thanks.
Okay, Main Street. Gary?
I pretty much got everything in the report.
Okay.
Awesome.
Same on the emergency too.
I know. I love it.
Thank you.
Well, that's another counselor now that's doing reports. I better pick up my case.
I was gonna say, we're running a tighter ship.
I do have a few things on the um, emergency that didn't get in. The emergency department or commission would like to be adding this to the utility bill. And it's basically um, trying to get everybody to put their addresses so that they can be read from emergency responders.
Can you put it towards the camera so like, people can see? There you go. Nice.
This, this was put together by Carol Otten. So it's that, something that we would all agree on. And then we'd like to try, try to use that as a tool for um, a campaign that each month um, we'd try to stress go bags and different aspects of getting prepared.
So are you asking to be able to do that?
Or how, how we can?
What can, and, and not to be a stickler, but will you pass that around just so we can speak at it real quick before we?
And you said that would go in, that would go in what, in which, in, this would go in what?
In the water bill.
Water bill, okay.
And obviously, I'm not thinking it's gonna be a problem. I'm just doing the due diligence. In case it's a tiebreaker, I don't wanna vote.
I don't think it increases the um, postage amount. And Keely mentioned that it could be put in the collator and folded automatically with our machine and...
They have a machine that does that? That's like the biggest gain I've done in my office career in the last year, is figuring out how...
Yeah, there's the machine right there waving.
Oh, okay, okay. That's, that, that, I feel better about that there. I don't know. Uh, yeah, 'cause I think it's four pieces that can go in before you have to pay extra. So yeah, on postage, yeah.
Well, within the...
Okay, good. So we're languishing on these reports.
And then um, we, we have six vehicle radios, Ken Woods, that were purchased from a brand a while back.
A long time ago.
A long time ago. And four of them, there were ten altogether, and four of them went to the police uh, vehicles. So there are these six uh, radios, and um, um, our local mechanic, Jeremy, uh, J and D, um, said that he would be able to install them. And it looks like it'd be around $250 a vehicle. Um, and that we would be looking at using one of them as a base radio that would maybe go into Melissa's office. And for that, we need to find out if we have antennas that would work, that are on the building already. And if not, it'd be a couple thousand dollars to get the whole thing together for that. So I don't know how, would, there is money in the um, budget for the emergency department. There's $11,000. And I know that we're tight, but I didn't know, this is a pretty important thing to have for all the time, but I think it would be really valuable if we had an emergency, we'd be able to have Melissa be able to on the radio, um, Public Works, the Fire Department, and our Police Department. And I would find ways to connect with uh, sheriffs and um, ODOT. So this, this would be a really inexpensive comparatively for other, the other things that we need. And it'd be very effective, I think, for emergency response.
So all we really need is a proposal to accept, you know, pretty much write up what you just said. Not that I wanna make it last for a month, but it's money. So if you just write up a proposal with those numbers, it should be, you know, then we just go through the motions and everything.
And I know more about the antenna by then.
Exactly. Yeah, at least then you'll know the worst-case scenario of it doesn't work out. In my experience, you always need the antenna, but I'll, I'll not.
Thank you. We'll work on that.
Light consensus, uh, go along with the numbering of the addresses.
Right.
Oh, yeah, the, on the piece of paper, yeah. I was gonna say that we'll just make that items uh, eight, eight D, real quick, just so it's official. But yeah, thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't do two things at once with this brain. Fire. Okay, no old business tonight. We're gonna move on to the Beacon Broadband franchise agreement discussion, so thank you for your patience. I told you it wasn't gonna take that long, but whenever I say that.
I'm gonna give you a quick handout. I'm not really gonna cover this, but
Thank you.
A little bit of information to you about Beacon Broadband, and who we are, and what we're going to do for a week. So, um, I'll, I'll just start with um, some, some background. Uh, back in 2020, the Kuzcuri Electric Board of Directors authorized the construction of a fiber-to-the-premises broadband network that would serve every single Kuzcuri Electric member who wanted to take service from it. Um, we had received a uh, a, a grant through the FCC that would uh, get us started. And the uh, the board authorized um, this project. It is uh, it was initially, in our initial feasibility studies, it was a project that would uh, cost uh, about $64 million to build in both Kuz and Cree counties. And uh, and so significant investment in the community for the benefit of our, our cooperative members. Beacon Broadband was organized as, as a uh, it's, it's a wholly owned subsidiary of Kuzcuri Electric Cooperative. And it's organized as a for-profit, but though we don't operate it that way, the reason it's organized for profit is so that we have the ability to serve some of our neighbors outside of the Kuzcuri Electric footprint, like the Town of Powers is an example in, in Kuz County. And uh, a-also Langlois here in Cree County, because they're served by the City of Banden Electricity. So, significant, uh, significant investment in the community. We're using uh, local contractors as much as possible. Our primary contractor is Keyline Construction. Um, what is not being covered by uh, by grants is being financed through Cobank, which is one of the biggest uh, um, cooperative banks that serves rural America. It uh, it serves both agriculture and utilities. And so uh, that is, that is a little bit of history. Um, and, and just to give you an idea of, of the service, you know, Kuzcuri Electric, we're in our 85th year uh, of serving Kuz and Cree counties. And the, the trust and integrity that Kuzcuri Electric serves uh, our electric utility is the same trust and integrity that, that we are building Beacon Broadband to serve uh, high-speed fiber broadband. Um, art, just to, to, just as an example, uh, when you talk about the grant funding that's available for broadband today, uh, the minimum, what's considered um, underserved is if you have less than 100 megabit per second download and 20 megabit for, per second upload. Uh, that's considered underserved in the grant funding. Beacon Broadband's lowest package is 500 megabits symmetrical, and it goes up from there. And, and that, the rates for that are competitive with our, with our competitors. Now you, you all in, in the city of Port Orford have the, the benefit of, of having some other incumbent providers. Um, many of, many of our members at Kuzcuri Electric on the outskirts don't have any other options. And so this is a game changer for them, but we are also future-proofing um, Port Orford by building this infrastructure. So uh, our construction started at the south end of the service territory, down in Brookings and Harbor. We are serving uh, today all the way through Pistol River. And within the next couple of weeks, we'll be um, serving Gold Beach and then continuing to move north. Our construction, however, is, is, is working ahead of um, of being able to provide service, and we are actually on the outskirts uh, of the city of Port Orford today. And so uh, we uh, are here tonight to uh, with a, a draft um, franchise agreement proposed to the city so that we can uh, build the fiber network in, within Port Orford city limits. And this uh, fr- draft franchise agreement that's in your packet is the, the standard uh, template that we have used with the city of Gold Beach and the city of Brookings. And uh, I, I, I don't know, uh, maybe you can tell me what level of, of overview you would like uh, to, to, to go through with this if, or maybe I'll just ask questions at the end, but um, essentially it, it spells out how we will work with um, with the Public Works Department to get permission. It does point out on page three that uh, during construction uh, for the period of year, one year from when we commence, that we won't necessarily be coming for permits for every project, because we're, we're just blanket building across uh, the entire city. And then when it gets to the franchise fee portion itself in, in page six, section nine, um, based on state law, um, the maximum that um, that can be charged for a, a broadband provider of our type is 5%. And so that's what we have spelled out in the franchise agreement. Um, you as a city are welcome to uh, choose a lesser number than that if you would like. Um, I, I, I will leave that invitation for you, but um, that is the maximum that, based on state law, that can be provided, uh, can be uh, assessed of Beacon Broadband. Just to give you some uh, idea of what that will mean for the city, besides having the awesome benefit of, of the availability of, of that um, broadband service to your um, citizens in the city. Uh, uh, we estimate, and we've got a range here based on the number of addresses within city limits, and um, some estimated take rates, that on the low side, uh, it would, it would be a new revenue stream of, of around 9,000 and potentially up to a double of that, around 18,000 annually. So uh, that will, will be the um, the income stream that will come to the city as a result of the franchise fee. And so um, I, I realize I started and didn't introduce myself. Uh, I'm, I'm Brent Bischoff. Uh, I'm the CEO of Kuzcuri Electric Cooperative, as well as Beacon Broadband. Um, I have responsibility for, for both. So um, really appreciate the opportunity to ti- uh, to, to meet with you, to talk about the franchise agreement and, and ask uh, for your support uh, in, in approving this. And happy, I realize this is a first draft. We really haven't had any back and forth as a result of uh, the transition that you've had in, in your leadership here. So um, this is a, a little bit on the, on the um, you know, it's timely that we get this passed so that we can move in and start construction unless the, unless there are some concerns about the language that might take some back and forth. Um, we might ask that, you know, we can, we can potentially start construction ahead of having it if you're, if you're not able, if we're not able to approve tonight. So uh, with that, happy to answer any, any questions you might have.
When are you hoping to start construction?
Construction is actually just, literally just south. So as soon as the franchise uh, agreement is in place, we would, we would start construction.
They've been working on Jackson Street already.
Yeah.
I have a, a couple thi- things. Go ahead, Dan.
Well, I was just gonna ask, um, it looks like there is going to be a demand of time from our Public Works, and so I would just love to get input from um, Public, Public Works Superintendent Sizador on, on this.
Hi, Ann. I'm here. I did, I missed your question, Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry, John. I was just gonna ask for your, your input on this, because I, I know that they were asking for, you know, meet, more meeting time and, and such, and I know you've been so slammed lately, but just wondering if you have any input on, on the, what they're asking for from you and your staff for this uh, franchise agreement?
Well, I look forward to working with Beacon. Of course, it's our local company, so um, I will say that we had a lot of trials and errors with the last company that came through. Um, there will be areas where we're not gonna allow boring because of our infrastructure. But I think that if I can get a hold of somebody that can coordinate with me what, what areas they're working in and where they wanna do their underground work is my biggest concern. Um, that we can probably work it out. I just, we can't do like we did the last company where we have 17 locates in a week. It just, it just won't happen. We're down to three man staff right now. Um, so I, I, I'm more than well uh, kinda, I read through the agreement. I don't see any things that pop out that is a big deal. Just working hand in hand with the crew as they're going forward for their underground work. The aerial work won't really affect us. So um, I'm not concerned about the aerial work. It's the underground work that we'll have to, may take some time, and we may not be able to get to their locates when they want them. Um, but we'll do our best to work with them.
Yeah, the locates have changed so much in the last 10 years of, of how many times you have to go back out and repaint. And like, other companies will call two months ahead, you know, and it does rain a little bit around here, so you end up going back three times to remarket, but it's all just good communication, so.
Yes, yes, 100%.
And if I could just comment on that, we're just looking into a, a, a new technology that uh, we will probably first employ here in Port Orford, where we are actually induct the, the fiber inside the electric conduit. So where, where it, where it works, we won't have to um, we, they'll be, will prevent some additional boring. Um, we are, we, we were just recently sent uh, one of our operations managers at Kuzcuri Electric to go and learn about this technology, and um, it's, it's fairly inexpensive to employ, but has a, but a huge cost savings and a huge uh, savings in the disruption um, within, within the city boundaries and, and across the service territory, where we do have underground electric infrastructure, because essentially um, uh, Beacon Broadband will, the fiber path will follow the electric path. Because essentially Beacon Broadband will, the fiber path will follow the electric path. So, so that has a potential to, to save on Public Works time.
Sounds great, that part. John gave two thumbs up as you were saying that. So I think he, he appreciated that.
Yeah, as an electric co-op, as an electric utility, we're not necessarily willing to allow other providers like, like Zipley or Charter to use that path. But, you know, it's our own company. It's our wholly owned subsidiary. And so we'll, we'll be taking advantage of that new technology.
Excellent.
Okay, so.
And yeah, I was curious about that as well. And then I was curious about us having a lawyer look this over before we.
That's what I was just gonna say, is that, that there are any motions, it probably should be contingent on attorney review. Because even though we have acquired an attorney, we can still call, you know, call and get that done as a clerical or administrative thing, you know. So, good point. That's the same thing I was thinking. So any motions, you know, in the positive, we should add that little caveat of.
Excellent.
Pending attorney review.
So I would move then that we accept the franchise agreement pending attorney review.
The franchise agreement.
With Beacon Broadband.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we got a first and a second. Any other discussion on that?
Now, are we saying that this, this is the way we're gonna, the ordinance? Or is this gonna get worked through anymore? I mean, is that the only issue?
You're right, though. It probably should be calling out the resolution a little bit more so we don't have to come back to do it.
I'm just wondering, Brent mentioned that there was gonna be a little bit more back and forth?
There, there could be, just depending on the city's needs. The, you know, because this is a template that we've used previously with Brookings and Gold Beach. We're comfortable with it. They, they were comfortable with it. There's no significant changes from, from what we have in place in those two other cities.
Yes, 99% sure. It's just the due diligence part.
Absolutely. And, and, you know. And I, I, I would just ask the question, if you, if you pass the resolution this evening with that contingency, we'd love to be able to say that we can go ahead and, and get to work.
Yeah, you can, yeah, because we can kind of burn and turn. Like, it's, it's, it's a pretty standard review. So, sorry to do this to you guys, but if you don't mind withdrawing your second and withdrawing your motion, we could redo it or, you know, to accept ordinance 2024-04.
01.
Oh. Oh, yeah, it's been a while.
2024-01, correct. So I'll withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you.
Now I move that we accept resolution 2024-01, subject to attorney review.
Second.
Okay, now any discussion? I like seeing the two thumbs up from John. And a lot of the staff time, like, when somebody calls and asks for a locate, you have to go do the locate, you know, which the staff would be doing regardless. I mean, you know, it's, it's just one of the job duties. But it has changed where, like, you have to go out there three more times than you're used to. It used to be kind of the contractor would maintain it and it.
It's just a lot to put on our crew for, in a short period of time.
For sure. But that's why it's nice that it's a local company and we can work together a little closely with the locates. I mean, it's not gonna be like you're gonna do seven, well, I guess when you're born and doing stuff, it'll be quite a few. But I think we kind of got a bad taste in our mouth of, you know, some past interactions. But I think having the, the local angle of it should knock on wood, help quite a bit.
And now, is there gonna be quite a bit aerial? Or is most everything going in the ground or?
Everything, it will follow the electric plant. So if the electric plant is aerial, then the, the construction of the fiber will be on the poles. And if the electric is underground, then we will follow the underground path. And again, inducting where we can and then new undergrounding where we can't follow through the conduit already existing for the electric service.
Is there any kind of a percentage of how much is maybe aerial compared to what exists?
I don't have that number off the top of my head for the Port Orford city limits.
I feel like you have as much underground as you possibly can. And I know there was a big push for it, so.
Ann may have a question too.
Ann, you got a question? I never look at the screen.
I was just gonna say, I, I'm trying to find where it was in here. I read the earlier draft about that. I appreciate that you guys have offered to, I believe, cover some of our staff time during this period. Then there's gonna be a lot of work. And so that's another thing, Melissa, I just hope that it might require a little effort in your department to figure out how to be efficient with that. And because that would be great if we can, if we're gonna be spending a lot of staff time to, to figure out how we take advantage of that.
Yeah, at least in my version, that's it. Second to the bottom paragraph in page three, it says that we will, you know, if you, if you invoice us for your, your city staff time, then we'll reimburse you for that.
I really appreciate that, Brett, thank you.
You have a vac trailer too and things that might help us work together to. Because I mean, a lot of the lines, you, you know as well as we do, that it's a map with a line on one side of the street. And, and we've had a lot of transition. And, and that's the only thing that I think Public Works and me worry about is, is not knowing exactly where things are and kind of rolling the dice to find out. But if this stuff's going at the same depth of your electric lines, I, I think we're gonna be okay.
Yeah, and, and actually this does not go as deep. It's, it's shallower than.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Sure, we're gonna break some stuff along the way, but that's what happened. Okay, any other discussion or questions on that? I will call for the question, Councilor Pogwitz.
Tim, yes.
Councilor Rask.
Yes.
Councilor Burns.
Burns, yes.
Councilor Velis. Councilor Ann. Yes. She said yes for the record.
I saw it.
I read her lips. Yes, so thank you for your time and your patience, gentlemen.
Thank you so much, Mayor and council members. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Still waiting, it's like I, I could see you. 30 years younger now as soon as you said it. I wish I was only 30, but.
Thank you.
Okay. Where'd my agenda go? Okay, CTR, thank you for your patience. You picked a rough meaning. We, this is the first time we've had this many presentations in one, I think.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, councilors. I'm here to present the yearly request for rate adjustment. As rate adjustment is based on, according to our, related to the CPI average. This last year, the CPI average was 4.1%. And this year, CTR is not asking for the entire amount. We are only asking for 75% of that amount. And that would equate to 3.08%. That change would basically be 94 cents per month for 32 gallon can in the city limits of Port Orford. And by the way, my name's Ken Wald. I'm the operations manager. And Luke couldn't be here tonight, so I'm taking his place.
They gave you the easy presentation. Usually they don't come with a 75% of.
Yeah, it's a, we felt that last year was a, was a rough year. It was rough on everybody. It was rough on the community. And we thought that we could tail back on our, on our request this year.
I appreciate that.
Appreciate that, because last year was 8%,?
Yes, sir, it was.
Tim's got a good percentage memory.
Well, that's, that was actually, you guys have been fair over the years, very fair. And last year, obviously, you know, inflation was what it was.
Yes, sir.
CPI was what it was. So you guys asked for it. So we appreciate you guys, thank you.
Do we need a motion to approve the? I'll make a motion to approve the rate adjustment for CTR.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All right, I'll call for the vote. Councilor Vrask?
Yes.
Councilor Burns?
Burns, yes.
Councilor Velis?
Yes.
And Councilor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
Thanks for your patience.
Thank you all very much. Gary, it was pretty interesting, really.
Yeah, no, good.
Thank you.
It can get a lot more interesting down here. And I, I skipped item B, which is the Kuzcuri Electric Community Partnership. And Kuzcuri, CCCC is seeking grants from the Department of Energy for improving the resilience of their infrastructure. Having letters of community partnership increases their chance of receiving the grants. They have drafted the letters in your pocket and they are hoping we reviewed it and are ready to sign. Did you have anything you wanted to say on that, Mr. Bischof?
I could just add quickly, these are two resilience projects that we are working. Well, one resilience project, one smart grid project. It's, it's through the DOE's Grid Resilience and Innovation. And one is to build the fiber network to our substations so that we can start to employ more smart grid applications, making, taking advantage of new technology for reliability, resilience, wildfire mitigation, and, and other applications. The other one is a resilience project that will improve. One of the projects is improving the resilience here in the Port Orford area, providing a, a redundant path that provides, if, if one path is out, then we still have service to the, the city and the port. So that's, that's what we're shooting for. We're looking for some grant funding to, to move these forward. Thank you for your support.
This is another one that I could see that was, our ask was John's time, it looked like, if I read that right, local expertise.
Yeah, I don't, I don't expect that we'll, we'll need any, any, any staff time for that.
Basically, they're looking for, you know, our support.
Our blessing.
They're looking for our letter of support, long story short. And it's gonna go in the packet of their grant funders. And they, like, city support is kind of key on this. I mean, it helps a lot, so.
Do we need a motion or can we just consensus approve this letter?
Let's just do a motion real quick. I'm not a big fan of consensus on, on agenda items.
I move that we approve the letter of support to Kuzcuri Electric.
Second.
Okay, I'm not even gonna ask if there's discussion. Councilor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
Councilor Rask?
Yes.
Councilor Velis?
Yes.
And Councilor Burns?
Burns, yes.
Thank you. I keep, every time I look at you, I get ruralite in my head, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
We do. Oh, oh, gotcha, yeah, yeah, yeah. And so I had added at the start of the reading, item 8D, which is, well, I had, it's, so what it should be is 8D is this conversation about resolution 2024-04 for authorizing Melissa to sign at the bank. And then, but, and then, because I didn't write it down, and then we'll talk about the flyer, which both of these should go pretty quick. So what's on the table right now is the authorization for Melissa to be a bank signer.
I'd make a motion, we approve 2024-04.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, great. Councilor Burns?
Burns, yes.
Councilor Velis?
Ann, yes.
Councilor Pogwitz?
Tim, yes.
And Councilor Rask?
Harry, yes.
Okay, moving on. We know that it's irregular, but Councilor Burns did present a pretty innocuous document to add into the, into the billing. So I will get a quick consensus on that of it being okay.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm really loosening up on things, Gary. Okay, and Ann, you're good with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Gary. Okay, continuing action items. The only thing I can think of based off of this is the camera conversation. We obviously know that we have an attorney conversation in the works. We're really gonna push to get that wrapped up by the next meet. I mean, as far as try to get the permit out and, and that out. And then by the next meeting, hopefully we can gain on that a little bit, or at least, yeah. So that's why it's a continuing action item and not agenda yet. Same thing with the camera conversation.
I mean, there's meeting cameras?
Yeah, yeah. So considerations, do we have any citizen considerations?
I do. I have, I have concerns. This is Cola Baba, 611 Jackson Street. Over the past five months, the city utility clerk has failed to give us our garden meter credit, even though the garden, garden meter readings were written on the utility bills and numbers large enough for a blind man to see. We learned from the utility clerk that Mayor Cox and John the Sewer Man told the utility clerk not to give us our garden meter credit. What they have done is collusion to defraud us of our garden meter credit. They got away with it last year on a technicality. This time, they're just making stuff up to defraud us of our garden meter credit. We believe the mayor and the sewer man and the utility clerk do not have the legal authority to cheat us of our garden meter credit. Only the city council has the legal authority to cheat us of our garden meter credit. We think this collusion will make quite a provocative letter to the editor and to the Oregon Department of Justice, don't you?
Thank you.
That was Teresa Cola Baba.
All right, any other citizen concerns or considerations? What about councilors? Go ahead, Perry.
I want to request that we schedule a workshop on the ordinance enforcement.
Okay.
Basically, the cleanups.
Which cleanup are we referring to, just?
The, there's a few.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's what I.
Rightaways and.
Okay.
Right. And I'm, and I'm, yeah, and I'm guilty of stuff, but I'm always like, maybe we could get the building code stuff wrapped up as far as ordinance compliance, you know? Or like, there's so much compliance stuff that we do need to have a workshop to kind of.
That's what popped into my mind.
What's that?
A couple of, a couple of buildings, that's what.
Yeah.
You mentioned that, that's what popped into my mind.
Yeah, the Jackson Street obviously is the most glaring.
Okay, well... Do we want to, I mean, it's, so we just found out today we might have 12 budget meetings.
Might have what?
12 budget meetings. So.
That the council might?
Yeah, like for this budget process and what we're working against, the main man who we probably should have made our officer, budget officer at this meeting. Doesn't matter, we can do a quick executive session if we have to. Because Dave's gonna be doing the budget, we need to, like, officially make him the budget officer. But it's, it's okay, we're, we're fine on that. We just need to make it official at some point.
Okay.
And I'm not trying to deter that workshop by any means. Like, you're just kind of, it's like, I don't want to do another meeting. And so I think, oh, I have a valid reason this time, there's 12 budget meetings. But it's, it's something that needs to be talked about.
And you know, I mean, I'd be, I'd be comfortable with putting it off into May, but I'd just like to schedule.
You, okay, let's just schedule it for May then.
May is budget session.
Wait, May, June, can we schedule it for?
Usually we start the budget right around May.
No, yeah, and, and it has to be done by June 30th. And I don't want to push it off to July, but.
Right.
But I could guarantee that I could schedule it for July today, but the other day it's a little.
Well, what about sometime this next, before our next meeting? Is there something in there?
Well, I'm, I'm not, I'm saying we could, but it's basically gonna be a conversation for an hour that's gonna breed more work for staff that's gonna be burning and turning on the budget right now. And I'm not trying to take away from the, from the conversation. But when we all know we have short staff, this is where we have to really be conscious to not put more. I mean, we're gonna be putting tons on them, don't get me wrong, but. So yes, we can have.
If I can say something, I, I agree with you, Pat. Totally support what, what. Totally support what, what, I want to just say I totally support what Perry is saying, but I really feel like we do have to prioritize the budget and helping Melissa get up to speed right now and getting our lawyer on board, because kind of all those pieces need to be in place in order to have that, that workshop be effective, if that makes sense.
So can we just maybe put it on the agenda for next month to schedule it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, I, I hear what you're saying and we were gonna get it. I was ready to like schedule it for July, but, so yeah, we'll definitely put it on the continuing action items. I don't have to write as much of this stuff down anymore. It's really nice, because I wasn't.
Well, you do, you need to write it down, so we both know.
And my, my counselor comments were how excited I was to have a city manager, how excited I am that David is gonna help us this year with our budget, get Melissa on board, so perhaps next year we won't be in the situation we're in. And it sounds like we, you and Pat found or got an RFP out for an attorney, so.
And Melissa.
A lot has been taken off my shoulders. I mean, I, I don't sleep at nights on nights because of all this stuff. So just those.
You have some nights you do sleep on?
Yeah. So just those three things, we've, we've really made some baby steps to, things are gonna get brighter and better and we could start doing some of these things you speak of, because there's some serious health and safety issues out there right now. And we have had citizens complain, I mean, when, there's one thing when, you know, there's certain things we know we all need to clean up on our properties or something like that, but when it becomes a serious health and safety issue, that's when something's gotta be done, so.
Well, and that's why we do, because even just like having a system of sending letters out and, and letting people know and establishing, hey, we've sent this letter out to you twice or you've known for three months. And so I don't feel bad about doing what we have to do, because we've given you every opportunity. And I think we'll be able to pick some of them off just with that. It's just because we've been so overwhelmed for years. We've talked about that multiple times. It just, we've had some transitions over the last couple of years, it seems like, to where a lot of the stuff, but yeah. The moral of the story is, Perry, is yes, it needs to be talked about, nobody's trying to deter you. It's just the worst time of the year before, for extra stuff. So what other councilors have concerns?
I don't have any other concerns.
I just want to echo what you said about being really grateful to have Melissa on and to be making progress on some of these things that we've been working on for a long time. So really grateful that, really glad for that, you guys. Thank you.
They took mayor concerns off here, so I don't have to worry about it. I don't got a care in the world anyway, so let's get out of here.
Jeez.
He gets you every time, I think. I used to get Melissa too. Welcome to the city of Port Orford, Melissa. I don't doubt, huh?